Communication with all parties, responsibility for our decisions and actions, and excellence in every deed. And before we proceed any further, I need to do a roll call of the board members. So I'm going to start to my right, Commissioner Toby.
President.
Commissioner Curran.
Here.
Commissioner Gilreath.
Here.
Commissioner Bullock.
President.
Commissioner Bridges.
Here.
Okay, and at this time, I still do not see Mayor Protem or Commissioner Fields. And so I will try to make a note of that, or somebody can help make sure I notice if they log on so that we can document that for the record. And with that, Reverend Bruce Beck of West Oxford Baptist Church, we are so happy to have you with us tonight and hope for those that are so inclined that you will open our meeting in prayer.
In honor, let's pray. Well, Father, you tell us to seek the peace and prosperity of the city, and we praise you for your grace and your mercy upon Oxford. Father, for the leadership that you have put in place for the things that you have accomplished through your people. And Father, I just pray that the churches in our community would continue to be that light, would continue to be that hope. Father, would continue to be your hands and your feet in this community. We do pray for the continued peace and prosperity that you would bless us and prosper us for the sake of your name and your honor and your glory. And so I pray for this meeting tonight, that you would lead and guide and direct. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. And with that, because I do not see Mayor Protem online, I'm going to ask Commissioner Bridges if he will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, I'd be glad to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Commissioner. At this time, we will consider adjustments to an approval of the agenda. We have one item that is already listed in the agenda packet. That is item 4A, which was not on the agenda last week when we met, to consider adopting a resolution to authorize the city manager, planning director, and guidance director to sign all requisitions for funds from the Community Development Block Grant, Coronavirus Block Grant 20V-3524. And so that is one item. And the city manager mailed or emailed to everybody a second item on Friday afternoon concerning the extension of emergency paid sick leave. Colleagues, did you all get a chance to see that item?
Yes.
Okay, so he set out the policy. So well, I heard from committee, how about everybody raise your hand if you had a chance to see it?
I didn't, Jackie.
Oh, you're on, Commissioner Fields, hooray. So we can add Commissioner Fields to our roll. You did not see it, okay? I am going to ask if it's possible for Alyssa to resend that to you. I think that's probably the best way. And but anyway, it is a policy that we had in place that expired at the end of the year, and the manager is requesting that we extend to make this policy. So we can discuss the details of it, but in the meantime, there is a, he proposes that we add that to the agenda as well. And so with that, are there, is there any discussion about any additional items or anything? Or a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Toby. Commissioner, your motion is to add these two items?
To add the items to the agenda, yes.
Okay, is there any discussion from any other members of the board? Okay, hearing no discussion, I am going to start with going at my right on the screen. For the vote, Commissioner Toby.
Yes.
Commissioner Curran.
Yes.
Commissioner Gilreath.
Yes.
Commissioner Bullock.
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges.
Yes.
And Commissioner Fields, you're way down there at the bottom.
Yes.
Okay, and am I correct? I don't see anything indicating that Mayor Protem has logged on. Okay, so it looks like he's not. So that motion carries to adopt the agenda as stated, six to zero unanimously. And in order to provide for our highest standards of behavior and transparency in governance, our commissioners approved the Code of Ethics to establish guidelines for ethical standards for ourselves and to provide guidance in determining appropriate conduct. Among those, that we should avoid impropriety in the exercise of our official duties and should conduct the affairs of the board in an open and public manner. I now inquire whether any board member knows of any conflict of interest or appearance of such with respect to any matters before the board tonight. And if you do know of a conflict of interest or appearance of such, please state so at this time. Okay, let the record note, there are no conflicts. And with that, we proceed forward to our delegations. And I would like to invite Carleen Evans of Winston William Creach Evans and Company to give the presentation of the city's audit this year. Ms. Evans, the floor is yours.
Okay, this is Carleen, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, passed that test. Okay, I believe we have a presentation that should pop up.
So, yeah, did you get permission? Alyssa's going to share the screen, there we go.
Okay. All right, okay, I am here to present the audit for the June 30th, 2020 year. You got to the very first slide? The next slide, rather. Okay, great. I want to start out by saying, you probably already know that the city did receive the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting for the June 30th, 2019 audit. And that was the 17th year in a row that we got that certificate. And we are submitting the June 30th, 2020 report to the GFOA, GFOA for grading as well. In the 2020 audit, it was a single audit this year, which is the highest level of service of audit that can be offered, and that is due to the fact that we had federal expenditures over $750,000. And for the 20-year audit, we had no findings to report for either the financial statements or the schedule of expenditures. So if we go to the next slide, we'll start looking at the government-wide statements. And this is a summary of the statement of net position. You can see at the end of the year, we had total assets and deferred outflows of $67,146,000. We had total liabilities and deferred inflows of $30,542,000, leaving us net position of $36,604,000. And this changed for the assets from last year to this year. We had an increase of $9.6 million. There were two items mainly increasing that. Capital assets increased 4.6 million, most of that was construction in progress. And then cash increased 6 million, and I have a slide later to show that as well. Liabilities increased 6.4 million over the past year, and that was due to the increase in debt, which I have a slide for that as well, we can see later. Next slide, we're still in the government-wide statements, but this is a statement of activity summary. Revenues for the year were $17,700,000. Expenditures were $14,522,000, leaving us an increase in net position of $3,187,000. Increase was down $152,000 from the prior year's increase. Then the next slide goes to the general fund revenues. This is in the fund statements, and this lists the revenues by type. 38% were ad valorem taxes, and that totaled $3,623,000. 22% were from other taxes, which was $2,116,000. 7% were unrestricted, which was $679,000. We had 4% that were restricted, which was $333,000. 1% were from permits and fees, which was $49,000. We had 25% from sales and services, and that total was $2,418,000. 1% from investment earnings, which was $78,000. Miscellaneous was 220, excuse me, $22,000. And then 2% of the revenues were from transfers in, which was $225,000. And that gave us total revenues in the general fund for the year of $9,549,000. And overall revenue, if you looked at last year, was down $916,000. But primarily, the reason for this was last year, we had a loan proceeds coming in for the purchase of a fire truck. And in the general fund, that's listed as other financing sources. So that was up 700, that accounted for $779,000 of that decrease of $916,000. So the next slide, still looking at those revenues, compares actual to budget. And you see, the original budget was $9,401,000. And after amendments, we had a final budget of $9,413,000. And our actual revenues were $9,549,000, so revenues came in $136,000 higher than budget. And then next slide will be the general fund expenditures. This is by function. 15% of the expenditures were for general government, and that was $1,426,000. We had 41% for public safety, which was $3,962,000. 23% was for transportation, which was $2,197,000. 11% was for environmental protection, which was $1,052,000. Our expenditures for culture and rent were 9%, which was $817,000. We had transfers out of $21,000. And then 1% was for debt principal payments of $87,000. So general fund expenditures totaled $9,565,000 for the year. And overall, that was down $31,000 from the prior year. The next slide takes these expenditures and compares actual to budget. And the original budget was $9,972,000. The final budget was $10,253,000. And actual expenditures totaled $9,565,000. So expenditures came in under budget by $687,000. Next is the general fund balance. We had non-spendable, this doesn't show us a percentage because the number's low, but we had non-spendable fund balance of $4,097. Restricted, which was either for state statute or streets, was 16%, and that was $1,036,000. We had committed fund balance of $87,000, which was 2%. We had a signed fund balance, which represented 7%, and that number was $467,000. And the largest portion, 75%, was unassigned. The unassigned fund balance was $4,865,000. And that left us total fund balance for the general fund at the end of the year of $6,461,000. And so the next slide takes that general fund and compares it to the expenditures. And the fund balance that was available for appropriation for the year was $5,698,000. We had expenditures of $9,565,000. So that gave us a fund balance as a percentage of expenditures of 59.87%. Last year, that number was 59.25%, so it's pretty similar to last year. Next slide moves to the proprietary fund revenues. This is the water sewer and stormwater. We had charges for services of $6,267,000. We had other operating revenues of $936,000. And we had investment earnings of $106,000, which gave us a total proprietary revenues of $7,310,000. And next is the proprietary expenditures. These are listed by category. 17% were general, which was $839,000. Media services were 3% or $129,000. 20% was from for water supply, which was $967,000. Line maintenance made up 14%, which was $668,000. The lift stations were 2%, which was $80,000. Stove water line was less than 1%, but it was $16,000. Industrial waste treatment was 18% or $854,000. And depreciation accounted for 24%, which was $1,144,000. And finally, interest expense was 2% or $124,000. So total proprietary expenditures for the year were $4,825,000. Our next slide shows a fund balance for each type of fund. First of all, the gray bars are the governmental funds. That fund balance was $6,517,000. That was up $109,000 over the prior year. And then for the proprietary funds, we had an ending fund balance of $31,534,000. That was up $3,171,000 over the prior year. My next slide just shows the cash balances for all funds combined. You see, 2019, we had ending cash of $12,901,000. At the end of 2020, we had ending cash of $19,57,000. So cash was up $6.1 million. But if we look at the flip side of that, on the next slide, is a list of all the outstanding debt at the end of the year. We did have one loan for pump or fire truck that was paid off during the year. Most of the loans are listed there. We had last year, other than the last two, they're new for this year. The 2017 DVI sewer main replacements and then the USDA water sewer improvements. Those two are new for this year. And so the overall debt at the end of the year was $18,285,000, which was up 7.5 million over last year's ending balances. Then the next slide moves to the tax collection and levy. The numbers on the left are the collections for the current year levy. And you can see in 19, we collected for 2019's levy, $3,568,000. This year, for the 2020 levy, we collected $3,597,000. So the collections were up $29,000 over the prior year. And then the percentages, you can see on the right, the graph's a little deceiving. It makes it look like there's huge fall, but this collection percentage was only down slightly, just a quarter of 1%. So the collections were 98.22% for this year. And next is my last slide. I wouldn't like to, everyone, this year, due to COVID, we had to do all the auditors. So they had to do a lot of work, scan and everything, and send it to us. I know it was a lot more work on them this year, but they helped us out a great deal doing all that. And then I'll just leave it for questions, if anyone has any questions for me.
Colleagues on the board, isn't there anything else that you would like to ask Ms. Evans?
Yeah, yeah, I had a question. And I was trying to listen closely, but I do recall something about revenues were either up or down $916,000.
Yeah, if you look at the, that was on the slide with the general fund revenues.
Right.
And in the general fund, when you have loan proceeds, there are booked as other financing sources, which show as a revenue type. So on the surface, if you just look at all the general fund revenues, it looks as though the revenue fell $916,000. But of that decrease, $779,000 last year was a loan proceed. So we didn't have that loan proceed this year. So it really didn't fall $910,000.
Right, and that related to the fire truck?
Yes.
Okay, okay, all right. Got it, thank you.
Other questions from colleagues on the board for Ms. Evans?
One other question.
Yes, sir.
Our expenditures were close to $600,000 less, right?
The general fund was, expenditures were down $31,000 from last year.
Right.
Oh, I know the $600,000 you're talking about.
Yeah.
Budget by $600,000.
Okay.
Where, I'm sorry, where is that again, Ms. Evans?
There's a, there's one slide that shows the general fund expenditures by function. That number is down $31,000 over the last year. But when you look at the general fund expenditure, that one right there, actual was, the actual expenditures were 9.5 million. We had budgeted a final budget of $10,000.2. So the actual expenditures came in under budget by $687,000.
Got it.
Okay.
And I'm not complaining or anything, but I was just wondering why, you know, things cost, you know, $600,000 less this year.
There was a lot of less spending under the budget by several functions. General government was under budget, $147,000. Public safety was under budget, $250,000. And culture and rent was under budget, $161,000. So it's just kind of spread between different departments, just being under the original, or the ending budget.
All right, thank you.
Can we get a copy of this? Can we get a copy of this presentation?
It came with your agenda packet, I believe, Commissioner.
We have one.
You did not see that in your packet when it was delivered?
No.
Ooh, our apologies.
Are you, yeah, I didn't get the actual things that she just showed us. I didn't get those.
You didn't get a set of slides?
I put it in everybody's packet.
No.
I got one.
I got.
I apologize, I apologize. I did get it, I did get it. I got it.
Okay, so Commissioner Toby, maybe double check your everything. It was packaged in there along with, I think, Mr. Ung's finance report.
Yeah, I got their financial. I'll go and look in the folder, yeah.
Okay, we'll certainly be happy to make you a copy and get that to you otherwise.
Okay.
Yep, we can even send it electronically if you'd like. If you don't have it and can't find it, just let us know.
I'll let you know. Yeah, it's unusual, I know, but yeah, fine, thank you. It might be my mistake.
You know, everything is a little bit different these days, which makes some things a little bit harder than they used to be. So don't worry about that. Colleagues, any further questions for Ms. Evans? Okay, well, with that, wait, actually, I think I had one. Can you, Ms. Evans, on the slide where, that shows the general fund revenues and 25% is, the income is sales and service, can you give us some examples of what counts as sales and services by the city?
Sure, the two biggest ones are garbage collection and fire protection.
Thank you, that's helpful. All right, okay, and let me double check. I don't think I had any other questions, but I have written myself a few notes. Can you explain to us, when you mentioned right in the beginning that a single audit is the highest level, meaning that that pays the most attention to detail? Is that it?
That there are three levels of audits for governments, is just a regular audit. And then once your expenditures, well, federal expenditures go over $500,000, you become a yellow book audit. And then once they go over $750,000, you become a single audit. And single audit just requires a lot more audit work. We have to do a lot of compliance testing and compliance work to see if the grants are being followed, that if you are yellow book, we don't have to do any of that. But we had federal expenditures over the $750,000 this year.
So did we, have we had a single audit in the past? And I apologize for not remembering.
Yes, it was, it skips, you know, some years, but last year was a single audit as well.
Okay, excellent, thank you. And so just for emphasis to everybody, I would say, in a single audit year, when there are no findings, we should feel pretty good about the work of our, of Mr. Ung and our finance staff. Would you agree with that, Ms. Evans?
Yes, I would.
Okay, excellent. So I want to sing out the praises to Mr. Ung and all of his staff for the work that they do maintaining everything in order and keeping up with everything so that we can have no findings. And I would also like to give a shout out to our manager, who is very careful with the city, the taxpayer dollars, so that the budget can, is, you know, well-maintained and that it is, I'm sure, for those that have been on the board for a number of years, that we are at the level of maintaining our fund balance where we should be for a city of our size. And until recently, that was not the case. So I just want to, I want to thank you, Ms. Evans, for your presentation, but I also really want to thank Mr. Ung and his staff and the city manager for their work on making us be financially sound. And if anybody else has any comments, I'm happy to hear them.
Apologies.
Mayor, I've got.
Apologies, I have it.
Yes, Mr. Thornton.
I've got a comment. I also want to say thank you to, not only to Mr. Ung and the finance staff, but to all of the department heads and staff for really buying in to what we've been preaching for the last, going on four years, which is, you know, we need to strengthen the financial position of the city of Oxford in preparation for what we see taking place in years to come and get ourselves into the proper financial position to make good choices. I know that the audit presentation typically takes, you know, five to 10 minutes. And that's not necessarily a bad thing, especially when you get an audit report like this one, where there are no findings and your revenues continue to climb and your expenditures are under control. But I want the board to, you know, fully understand that, you know, an audit report like this reflects a lot of very, very hard work and dedication over an entire year on the part of a number of individuals, including Mr. Ung and myself, and really diligence by all department heads and staff of the city of Oxford. So I hope everyone really understands that. And the mayor made mention of, you know, where the city was five, six, seven years ago. I still have the letters in my desk drawer, where LGC is making reference, you know, to the city's need to increase reserves and build fund balances and do all those kinds of things that raised the hackles of the local government commission. We don't get those letters anymore, thank goodness, and we don't want to in the future. So we made a commitment to really try to do everything that we could, and this is a reflection of that. And it was done, quite frankly, with, you know, about six months of coronavirus impact in place. So, you know, it's, it's just been a lot of very meticulous attention to detail, and the audit reflects that. And I also want to thank the auditors for their work in putting this together. So thank you to everyone involved. It is a significant achievement, and I hope that not only the board gathers that, but all of those who are out there watching this meeting understand the finances of the city of Oxford, to be very well watched over and are growing, and we are preparing ourselves to do what we need to do. And I think it's commendable that we have what we have and are doing everything that we are doing currently. I think that that's commendable for a city our size. So again, thank you to everyone.
Thank you.
So I think as Commissioner Fields showed us a while ago, the way that you applaud, I'm applauding because you really deserve it. And, and it makes me, it makes me very proud, and you're right to point out the work of the department heads that have worked hard. And I would add, with your mention of going through this with, with COVID, that of course, if we're in a predicament that revenues for the current fiscal year fall below where they're expected and don't support the budget as originally planned, that's precisely why we need to have a fund balance in the 60% range so that we can continue to function as, as we want to function without having to cut services to our taxpayers and stakeholders. So that's a, it is, you know, I remember when, I think, fund balance, I think when Commissioner Bullock and Curran and I were elected in 2009, I think the fund balance was at 10 or 11%. It was low. So this is, this is great. So thank you very, very much, and Ms. Evans, for your presentation. We appreciate all the hard work.
Okay, and I will say, I did look back just to 2018, the fund balance percentage was 34.6. Yeah, now I will say, I did look back just to twenty eighteen, the fund balance percentage was thirty four point six, so it has come up the last two years.
Yes, that that's what I was remembering. So um thank you, Ms. Evans, very much for your time with us tonight and for the work that you invested in the audit.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So we'll move forward to a discussion item, which is that we should have, I see Chris McLucky online. I'm not sure. I see Rachel Cotter, but she might be on with a phone number from McAdams are here to discuss the feasibility study fee proposal and pool option with cost estimates. And so for the benefit of anybody who's listening and doesn't have our agenda, there is a process schedule, a chart which indicates the tasks associated with the feasibility study and estimated timeline for completion. There are pool options, costs included, only represent the pool subcontractors, scope of work, and then an allowance based on industry average of a pool deck twice the ti- size of the square footage of the pool itself. The estimates do not include costs associated with maintenance, building, pump room, locker room, fencing, site work, parking, landscaping, utilities, and so on. These costs would be part of the next phase once a pool concept has been selected by the city. And then there's a fee proposal for a feasibility study indicating the planning services necessary to provide an overall cost for the pool project, including site work and utilities. And members of the board, you have all that support information in attachment two B. And um with that, I guess I I'm going to turn it over, but I do want to ask our Parks and Rec Director Tina Cheek if she has any comments that she would like to make before handing it over to Rachel Cotter and Chris McLucky.
Um, Tina, are you not? Yeah, yeah, I'm here. Um, not really, other than um I hope this is the information that the board wanted, and I hope uh that this helps in moving forward and and having this discussion. So uh but any questions that I can field, I'll be glad to once the presentation is over, and I look forward to the discussion.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cheek and uh Mr. McLucky. And Ms. Cotter, please take it away.
Thank you. I believe I'm up. My name's Chris McLucky. I'm with MVP. We're a construction management consultant in Raleigh, North Carolina. If you're looking at the uh information that was provided, there's a a summary sheet, but then there's, if you move to to pool option one, or let's let's back up just a second. What we were tasked to do was to come up with an approximate value or approximate cost of three different swimming pool options based on, you know, very little information. These are are pretty much thirty five thousand foot estimate budgets on what these pools would be worth to help the city begin to narrow down what size of pool they're looking for, what type of options they're looking for so that we can, between Rachel and myself, move forward with kind of refining that to to help you establish a budget. And if you look at, start with pool option one, um I'll start at the bottom, those two numbers. The the concrete pool deck is is pretty much a sidewalk, as you know. The cool deck slip resistant insulator is something that's highly recommended. It keeps the concrete from getting excessively hot when it sits in the sun. It also prevents the concrete from getting excessively slippery. When it gets wet, if you do broom brushed concrete, it tends to have a little texture and it's not very bad. It's not very bad in the beginning, but as that texture wears away, pool deck can get incredibly slippery. The industry average is between one point five and two times the square footage of the pool itself. So in the interest of being conservative, we went with two times. Um, through efficiency and design, you could probably get that down a little bit. But uh we went with the more conservative two times the size of the pool itself. Now, if you go to the top, you'll see uh the competition pool. This is a a twenty five yard pool designed for competition with starting blocks. And you'll notice that the pool itself is priced at two hundred and ninety dollars a square foot, which is um forty five to fifty dollars more per square foot than the other pool. And that is largely because of the gutters that you put around a competition pool to prevent the water from from the turbulence from the water in a race from flowing back and giving some people in the middle of the pool an advantage. Uh, the deck equipment number is in there. This is a an allowance, which would include things like an ADA lift so that disabled people could get in and out of the pool. Uh, it's guard chairs, starting blocks, basically anything that is permanently affixed to the pool deck. Then you have safety, loose and maintenance equipment, which would include ladders, um railings at the at the exit stairs. Uh, the the miscellaneous things that uh the flotation devices and whatnot that lifeguards have, the the skimmer nets and and pool brushes that are used by hand, those types of things. And all of that equipment and safety and maintenance stuff that we priced, we based pretty much on the size of the pool and the configuration. Uh, some of it is code and is is required based on the size of the pool, and some of it is just, it's it's a guesstimate. I mean, it's pretty close. And if you look at pool option one, you'll see that you have the competition swimming pool on your on the right. It's a standard twenty five yard competition pool. And then you have what appear to be two pools to the left. One is a is a is a zero entry play pool for for it doesn't get more than about sixteen inches deep. And then below that is a deeper waiting pool, which is more of a relaxation pool for adults. But a swimming pool contractor, because those steps that connect them, the water can flow between them, we consider that as one pool. So the multipurpose pool covers both of those structures to the left. And as you can see, the square foot price for those is fifty dollars a square foot less, which is primarily because of the fact that they don't have that that racing well around them. Based on the size of the first, the play structure that was shown, we estimated, and the the subconsultant that we worked with estimated about a hundred and ten thousand dollars for a play structure that size. And you'll see in the next two examples that there are wildly varying uh differences in the play structure. There's also sliding boards, the curvature slides in the other two pools, which vary greatly based on the size. So those are all cost components that can be controlled to some point. And this came up at one point eight five, six million dollars. I will preface that by saying that uh reinforcing what was said at the beginning, that that, all that buys you is the swimming pool, the the piping, filtration, water treatment stuff to to make the pool function, and then the deck, the starting blocks, the play equipment and the deck around it. There's no fence in that, there's no landscaping, there's no parking, there's no building over the over the pump equipment. And industry standard says that that's about, generally runs about the same price as the pool. That when you're building something like this, the pool is about half the cost. I know you have a, you may have a building on site, and there's a question as to whether that's going to be renovated or or torn down and built back, so all that would play into it. But that's a rough ballpark of how we got to this cost for this configuration. Now, if you flip to the next one, pool option two, you will see a much simpler swimming pool design, a much smaller swimming pool design. In the same neighborhood, two hundred and forty five dollars a square foot. Again, there's no competition wells around it. There's there's a zero entry or a skimmer pool end for uh youth and handicapped entrants. And then there are a couple recreational or exercise lap lanes at the other end, which certainly aren't designed for competition, but would work well for recreation. Um, the deck equipment budget is way down because this is a much smaller pool and would require significantly less deck equipment. Same thing for the safety and maintenance equipment. That smallish water slide back there has an allowance of a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. And that's a, the play feature, which you can kind of see in the upper left hand corner, is a very simplistic yellow sprinkler type device, which with piping and everything to it, uh we added an allowance of twenty thousand dollars for that. And then you have the pool deck. Uh, this is nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars, so approximately half of option one. Option three is kind of a combination of the two. It it's built like one pool, similar to the two smaller pools in option one. Because even though it looks like two pools, if water can flow over those steps there, which it can, this is treated like one pool. Um, because they're both large rectangles, the unit price comes down just a little bit. There's no radius walls, there's no built in interior benches or anything that the last pool had. So we want two hundred and thirty dollars for a foot. Um, there's a fair amount of deck equipment because you essentially are treating it as two swimming pools, as well as the safety and loose equipment. The water slide appears to be um a bit more robust, so that allowance goes up to a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. And the play structure uh is almost double the size of even the bigger one we saw, so it's at a hundred and fifty five thousand. And this one comes in very close to the first one at one point nine million dollars. The play structure, as you can tell, can be anything from twenty to twenty five thousand, all the way up to a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars. That's the cost that can be controlled. The water slide can be fifty or sixty thousand dollars, up to a hundred and seventy five to twenty thousand. So that's the cost that can be controlled. And um that's basically the the presentation based on the information. And I will, I will tell you in advance that those pictures that you see are really all of the information that we had on which to base this. We didn't have any real construction drawings or or a whole lot to work on. So we think we were mildly conservative in our number. But I I think the goal here was to to kind of pick a degree, pick a level that you wanted Rachel to start at, and then she was going to site adapt this pool and then move forward with the second phase. But I won't get ahead of myself and do Rachel's part. Um, Rachel, do you have anything you'd like to add? Or do you want to go directly to the questions for me?
Um, why don't we go ahead and take questions for you, and then I can talk about the next phase of the project, which would be the feasibility study?
Okay, very good.
Members of the board, any questions for Mr. McLucky?
I want to thank him for um doing this, but I did understand that um we could basically double the price on here with all the equipment that we will need, pump rooms, et cetera.
Well, yeah, industry, but that's that's public utilities. That's basically if you came to a greenfield site, just a open field, and you had to bring water and electric in and build a small building, you know, maybe with a locker room, parking, uh site drainage, all of that stuff, total project. A rough budget for that is double the cost of the pool.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, I noticed that with pool option number one, and when you compare it to pool option number three, pool option number one has one, two, three, four, five, six, it looks like six lanes, um, you know, uh for folks to swim, whereas pool option number three has essentially three. It looks like about three lanes, yet it's 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 more expensive than pool option number one. And I was wondering about that, because when I was looking at pool option number one, I guess I was thinking in terms of uh the city being able to sponsor swimming competitions. And and of course, you know, that would kind of be my hope that that this, that a pool would be able to generate funds in the future, uh allowing, you know, swim teams or swim clubs to have competitions there. And I was just wondering, you know, the 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 pool option number three is cost more, but it's got less lanes.
Well, if you look at pool option, if you look at pool option number one, that nine hundred and ninety six thousand dollar number is just for the competition pool only. And if you go to option three, that one point four five million dollar number, that's for everything, because that's treating that as all one big giant swimming pool.
Okay.
Connected. So if you if you continue through that, if you continue that sidewalk through and broke that into two pools, the square footage wouldn't change much, but the price of the competition pool would go up. And it would, it would, and the kiddie pool would go down. So it would end up approximately the same. But on a per square foot basis, the competition pool would compare about the same.
But I'm with you, Commissioner Bridges, that if the, if you're looking at those two versions, essentially, you've got, you get way more value with option one than than option three if you want to have competition. But I know that's a little premature, but thank you for, do you have further questions for Mr. McLucky?
I mean, my, the only other question I would have is, do all of these options allow for different phases of the pool to be built? You know, could we, could could we uh do something short of the complete thing and and then add on, you know, if 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 uh funding allowed it? You know, I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, could could we do something like the competition part of uh pool option number one and then add the other part at a later time, or is it just better to just try to do the whole thing?
You can. In fact, one of the things that we looked at, because where we started with this originally was talking about potentially enclosing the swimming pool or covering the swimming pool. And um depending on how you wanted to cover it, one of the things that that we kept coming back to is, once you build a swimming pool, you want to be very, very careful how much heavy equipment you had digging in close proximity to it, or you're going to crack it and you could risk destabilizing it. So even if you wanted to put uh an enclosed structure over this at some point, we would recommend that you put all the footings and the foundation in the ground for that first so that you can build out of the ground, which can be done. So can it be done? Yes. Is there a pretty substantial risk to digging within fifteen feet of your pool? Yes, there is.
Not worth it.
Now, I do have one comment real quick on on what sort of what Commissioner Bridges was talking about. The different options that I discussed with Rachel and Chris, that sort of, that that option one is, you know, definitely competition and and you're looking at a timing system. You'd need larger deck space, you know, if you were going to have, because so that number may be even greater than twice the cost of the pool or or what you see here. Um, and then obviously, if you're going to build the competition pool, then you're pretty much going to have to cover it pretty quick, because or otherwise, you're not going to get any competition out of it because they don't typically swim during the summer. I mean, some of the local groups do, but like the schools and things like that don't. Um, that's why they utilize ACOG right now, so. Um, and then also just looking at a pool like that and just kind of going back to some of the discussions that we've had over the last few meetings. That pool, you're looking at about it, probably the minimum depth in that competition piece is about four feet. Uh, and then the end with the blocks, you're looking at six feet. And Rucker currently is about three feet to five feet, and probably seventy five percent of the people that go there stay in the three foot area. Um, you do have some people that spread out and that sort of thing. So if we're thinking about the recreation aspect of it too, you kind of don't want such a deep pool. So just that's, you know, just part of the conversation going forward. But, but these were meant to be representation for competition, completely recreation and combination.
Thank, thank you. Other members of the board, questions for Mr. McLucky or Ms. Cheek? Okay, I have two at this time. Mr. McLuck, McLucky, can you tell us, you mentioned the adult relaxation pool? And that the small pool, is the small pool being about 16 inches deep? What's the depth of the adult relaxation pool on pool option one?
It's about three feet.
Okay, thank you. And are there, and I don't know if this is a question for you or our Parks and Rec Director, Tina Cheek, but are there guidelines for the size of the facility that our city needs according to population? Because, you know, I think that that should be something, we can all have our own independent ideas of, oh, I like this or that. But at the end of the day, if, if Oxford in 10 years is much larger than it is now, which, which I think is likely, what should we be looking at with respect to what we want to be able to provide for the community as it grows?
No, I, I understand the question. You, you don't want to build something that sits for years, underutilized. And you don't want to build something that's obsolete two years from now. But I think that that's more a question for Rachel. That's more part of the, I mean, we could incorporate something like that into the feasibility study and talk about, you know, potential use and population growth and you know, I, I'm not myself a pool expert on that side of swimming pools to know if you have a population of X and you should figure that X percent of that population might be at the pool at any given time. I, I'm sure those metrics exist, but I, I don't, honestly can't tell you I know what they are.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Cheek, do you, is that something that is out there? Or could be included as part of the feasibility discussion?
Yeah, definitely. And I'll let Rachel handle the feasibility piece of it. And one thing you don't see as much benchmarking now as you used to is, you know, you should have this many parks based on this many people or this many pools based on this population. It's more about really what your community, if you're a swim community, then you may need more pools. We are, you know, we have several pools in Oxford. And as we build new subdivisions and things like that, some of those, especially the larger, the PUDs and things, a lot of those are going to have pools as well. So we need to keep that, we're not, you know, we also don't have to build a pool for everybody that moves to Oxford. Because if they move to Oxford, and sometimes they're going to have their, you know, a pool within their subdivision. So there's that as well. But I think a big piece of it is just determining if you want to do, get into the competition piece of it. And if you're really, if you're, if you're looking more for recreation, and then sort of move, you know, move forward from there.
Thank you, thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, yes ma'am.
Hi, everybody, I'm finally home. Um, in all of our studies and in all of, in all of our conversations, have there been any thoughts or anticipation as to the life and the legacy of Rucker Park? You know, what, what, has there been any consideration to that? Or any thoughts?
You mean with the expectation of the lifespan of Rucker Park?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, well, I, I think this conversation seemed to start more around wanting the pool in downtown as opposed to Rucker Park. I don't know that, well, if we continue with Rucker Park, you're going to start seeing some requests from me for some fairly significant repairs. Pump room, things like that. We've got some leaks in the concrete, some different things like that. And that pool has served the city, I think, very well over time, but it is definitely showing its age.
Okay.
So I, I think if you were to build a pool here, you would probably close Rucker Park.
Okay.
You know, especially right now, where you're dealing with not having a lot of lifeguards and things like that. So, but.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So related to follow-up on Commissioner Fields, the, if, what do you, how many productive years in terms of looking at the timeline and when you would retire one and hope to have another to take its place? Before you're starting to spend a lot of money on the old pool, what are you thinking we, the city has in terms of years from Rucker Park?
It's, it's really hard to say. We could have, you know, I mean, we've gone through several motors, I think, over the last 10 years. And that's a, it's, you know, that's a couple thousand dollars. But we're talking about having to possibly redo the, the pump room. We have, you know, deteriorating metal beams in that room because the pump room was built below the guard room. And so you have metal beams holding up that top floor. And we did something two years ago to help expand the life of that. But you're probably looking at, you know what, I don't, I'm afraid to even guess because I might tell you something really wrong. But if you, if you have to rebuild that pump room, probably rerun the water lines, some different things like that, you're talking probably $200,000, something like that, to really do everything that needs to be done there. So, you know, the bath house, we've gone and we've made a lot of improvements over the last three years there. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to see it. But a lot of them are just aesthetics. So it looks nice when you show up, the bathrooms are clean. They're, thanks, they're clean, they're paint, you know, everything's painted. And, and it's functioning well right now, but there is definitely some work to be done in that pump room, in that room. And honestly, one of my problems is trying to find someone who can and will fix it. I've had a couple of people in there and they come and to give me quotes and they never respond to me. So I'm, I'm not sure what that says, but it's definitely a challenge. The, the filter system we have in that pump room, so.
Thank you, thank you. Does anybody have any other questions or shall we, we move on to Ms. Cotter? Okay, it looks like. Was there a question? Yes, ma'am, Commissioner Gilreath.
With regards to the idea of having competitions, um, have our school system or programs here expressed, expressed interest in that? For the competitive part of it?
Sorry, I'm having a problem, a hard time with my mute button. Um, right now, Oxford Prep, Carvance Academy, there's a year-round swim team, Vance Barracudas, Vance Charter, and three Franklin, Franklinton County high schools that have swim teams. And they all right now swim at ACOG in Henderson. But Oxford, if we're just talking about Granville County, then what's that, Oxford Prep? I think Carvance Academy and Vance Barracudas, I'm sure have Granville County residents that participate. But we really only have Oxford Prep right now that has a team. Now, part of that could be because they don't really have anywhere else to go. But I don't, I'm not sure where that conversation has been with the school system in the past.
And, and, and how is all of this is going to play out with what's going on with the county building out at the Gap?
I, I don't think they have any plans for a pool. So I, I don't, I mean, I don't know. I think we'd be, you know, providing a service that the county is not or will not, or isn't going to provide.
Even with their new addition out there? Because I don't recall a pool being part of it, but I haven't been part of those meetings at all.
No, they, they don't have a, their expansion right now is the tennis court area. Yeah, and, but I've not heard any discussion about a pool now. I, I attend all of the Granville County Park and Recreation meetings monthly. And I feel like they would probably start that conversation there. But, and I don't know, I've had a lot of discussions with Alan as well. And I don't think that he's heard anything about that. So I don't, I don't see that moving forward.
Yes, Commissioner, Commissioner Gilreath, are you done with your questions?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Bridges?
Yeah, when I was thinking in terms of the competition, it was my hope, and of course, you know, I, I know this has to be looked into. But I was hoping that swim teams outside of our county would converge on this swimming facility that we have to have competitions. Just like when we were talking about the baseball, softball teams coming in. They were not teams, they were not local teams. They were teams from all over the state who came here, spent money at our, you know, restaurants, hotels, things like that. And, and, and we were able to generate some income from those kind of teams. Now, it's okay that, you know, in terms of the teams that Ms. Cheek mentioned. But my feeling is if the facility is right and we are able to work out something where it could even be covered, I could see us bringing teams in from all over the state relative to competitions. And that was, that would be my hope. Along with the fact that our local senior citizens will have a place that they can come to in the relaxation portion or pool part. You know, bottom line is location, location, location. I am not interested in what they might want to do over there at Jones Park in terms of a pool. I, you know, I mean, that's not going to satisfy what my concerns are. And that is the underserved community of folk who might want to swim. And, and, and the bottom line is, you know, any apartment complex that has a swimming pool or some person who has a home that can afford a private swimming pool doesn't do anything for the poor children in our community.
Okay, thank you. Are, are we, any other comments? Are we ready to move forward to hear from Rachel Cotter? I think we're ready to move forward then. So Ms. Cotter, we're looking forward to hearing from you.
Great, thank you so much. I will be primarily reviewing the proposed services for the feasibility study, which would be the next step once one of the three concepts Chris presented is selected. We need some sort of a pool footprint in order to move forward. So we know what we're designing and pricing to a greater level of detail. The concept that we prepared for the HIX master plan is, you know, probably more at a 50,000-foot level. It's very easy to draw a pool on a map, but it's a whole nother thing to draw it in a location, connect utilities, complete the, the site grading and earth moving, and meet the requirements of any local, state, or federal permitting. So the feasibility study really looks at all of those details. We would be doing a stormwater investigation to understand the stormwater requirements for the site if we were to construct the pool and any associated infrastructure such as driveways or buildings or parking. We would also be completing a preliminary civil engineering grading and infrastructure review. So that's going to look at what utility connections are like, where they are, how long the utility runs might be. Do we have enough capacity for a pool? It's my understanding that capacity is likely not a concern, but we do want to confirm that. And we'll be doing a very preliminary grading plan. We don't yet have a survey of the site, so we are working off of GIS data. But it will give us a little bit of insight into the potential costs associated with moving dirt on the site. And these things are really required for Chris to complete the pricing of the site work. So we'll also look at your local unified development ordinance or land planning ordinance. We want to understand any requirements with regard to setbacks, landscaping, the number of parking spaces that would be required, support structures such as restrooms or showers, all those things we would need to provide in order to support the construction of the pool itself. As Chris mentioned, he provided pricing as if this were a flat, open field and we were just dropping a pool in. But we all know that that's not the reality necessarily of this site. And we need to understand the site a little bit better on a deeper level with regard to utilities and grading and site access and connectivity. So once we have selected a footprint, we'll also be revising the conceptual site plan. As part of this, we've decided just to focus in on what would be required to construct the pool and a required infrastructure. So we would not be looking at any greater detail into any of the other amenities that we propose for the site at this time. And with that information, then Chris would be able to develop a deeper estimate of probable construction costs that includes not only the pool, but also all of the site infrastructure that would need to be constructed to meet, as I said, local, state, and any federal requirements and to serve the site. One other thing that we're proposing as part of the feasibility study is the operations and financial plan. This addresses a number of the questions you all have had so far in this conversation. So in order to answer some of the questions about, do we want to build a pool for the demand today versus potential future demand? There are, there is something called Park Metrics, which is a new way. Tina mentioned that the standard level of service is an obsolete way of planning for the future. But we can look at Park Metrics, so looking at communities of similar size to Oxford across the country on a per capita basis and understanding what the typical number of pools per population, or actually it's population per pool is for those communities. I mean, you're absolutely right, oftentimes pools are constructed as part of private developments, but they are not open to the public. And there, so there is a significant, a number of individuals and families who do not have access to those facilities. So we're particularly concerned with providing facilities that are open and available to everyone who lives within the city. So another thing you want to consider is, does the city want to be a, a pool provider? Or is this more of a single recreation opportunity? Because once we do the financial plan, we're going to be able to understand the ongoing operational costs. So what does it cost to maintain a pool and to staff that pool? And there are, pools do have a pretty significant ongoing and annual operating fee. So we'll be calculating that for you. But we'll also be calculating the potential revenue based on the pool footprint. So we would take into account things like swim tournaments or rentals and what revenue that could provide the city. This is very much of a iterative process. You might get the operational and financial plan back and decide, well, geez, you know, that's very doable. There's a lot of revenue potential here. We want to do a bigger pool. And then, of course, we would have to do another concept plan and refine the cost estimate and, and operations and financial plan as well. But I do think this next step will give you a, a much deeper insight into the possibilities of the pool and the potential costs, the opportunities and constraints of the site itself. So at this time, I'd be happy to take any questions that you all might have about the feasibility study.
Colleagues, the floor is open. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Cotter?
You know, I, I, I certainly understand that, you know, part of the decision for this board is, you know, trying to finance, you know, to find where the money is going to come from for going forward with the pool. And I guess my question is, you know, do y'all also? And I guess my question is, you know, do y'all also recommend different funding options that we as a board might want to consider to, for example, some kind of bond, recreation bond, you know, where we can get the public involved in, in, in this campaign to try to have a swimming facility, you know, in the center of our community that would be open to the whole public? I was so happy to hear you say that word, Rachel, and that is available to everybody, because that is what's important to me. You know, I, I, I don't know how many pools are in Oxford totally, but I know that there are some kids who can't go swimming, either because of location, you know, where they live, transportation issues. You know, I, I remember a few years back, we were having a discussion about the Dagon basketball court being so close to the city hall and, 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 and folks that were against us having a basketball court where, where it is. I truly believe that if we work together and, and, and think of some funding sources aside from what the city might be able to do, you know, I love it that we have a good fund balance and, and, and our budget looks good, you know, all that's great. And, and I certainly don't want to change that, but I hope that Ms. Cotter, y'all will also talk with us about how other communities our size are able to come up with the financing for, for this, for this project.
Yeah, we could absolutely do that. We have a matrix of probably 20, 30 funding sources that we could review with you. All of them would not be applicable necessarily to your community, but they range from grants to bonds to sponsorships, partnerships, friends, associations. I think you, you know, hit the nail on the head when you said, you know, generating community support and excitement, some sort of a campaign is always a good way to do that, because once people see the vision and the dream, you'd be amazed with how much you're able to raise in terms of funds. So we'd be happy to include that in our, in our study.
I do have a question, Ms. Cotter. What, what do you, what is your price on your Facebook study?
Yes, sir. So the total price was $28,000. And then there are some optional services in addition to that if we wanted to look at any rehabilitation or structural assessments of Hicks Gym, but that would not necessarily be required at all to complete the feasibility study for the pool.
The, you were questioning about what other places did to get money for pools? And I looked on line at a lot of different communities, municipalities, and I found very few of them have pools. When I looked at Oxford in the state of North Carolina, we're like 98 in population, we're 86, 8800, something like that. I didn't find anywhere, well, I found one place smaller than us that had a pool within the next range of 15. And as far as cities larger than us, all the way up to around 18,000 population, I found like, like five had aquatic centers and seven had outside pools. And that was, that was out of a total of 31, I believe, cities that went from our size, which was 98, up to around 65 in the, in the population in North Carolina. So I, I, I don't know how you would find what other municipalities are doing when they're not doing, not in North Carolina anyway, not our size.
So Danny, I want to make sure, Commissioner Kern, that I understood what you just said. So you said you looked at populations like 8,600 to 65,000 in Oxford, in, in North Carolina? Did I hear that correctly?
No. I went from Oxford, which is around 8,800, 86, something like that, and we're 98 in rank of cities in the state. We're, we're 98. I went from there up to 65th in rank, and I think that was Larnburg or Graham, and they had, and they have around 15, 16,000 population.
Okay.
So we're 30 below, 32 or three below them.
Okay, thank you.
Between where we are and the next 32 or three towns larger than us, I found seven that had outside pool, five that had aquatic center. Most didn't have a pool.
So five had aquatic centers and two had pools?
No. Five had aquatic centers and seven had pools.
Seven had pools, okay, I apologize. Thank you.
And then one, one, Mount Area had two. They had both, they had outside pool and aquatic center.
Thank you.
But as I said, I don't know where we get any information from when very few towns, our size, a little smaller or even a little larger, very few of them have a pool. So I don't know what they can tell you on how to, how to build it when they don't, they aren't building them.
There, do you need any kind of response from Ms. Cotter on that? Or, or are you good making your state, that comment?
Does she have a reply?
I do. I think that that's very much a reflection of some of the initial construction costs and long-term operating costs. However, there are a lot of factors to consider, not only, you know, those costs, but also the average annual income of a community, and most importantly, what the vision of the community is for aquatics. It is, it might not be that common for towns within, small towns within North Carolina to have a pool, but it might not be their priority or their vision. So I would ask you all to reflect on, is this something you believe is going to add value to your community? Is a pool the vision for the city of Oxford? And if so, I don't know how much other communities that may or may not have that vision, what the, what weight that would put necessarily on, on the decision. And again, I can look at the park metrics, which is a national, it's a very similar exercise to what you did, but communities of similar size would report to the National Parks and Recreation Association, and I can look across the country at the population per number of pools and let you know some, some deeper information on that.
And you would compare it to average annual income per, per family or per person?
We could, I might look, need to look a little bit further into how to do that. That would be a benchmarking exercise, and we would probably have to pull the census data from all the communities who have pools. I think the, the key there is with higher average annual incomes, more people have money, dispensable income to spend on memberships to private gyms, to private aquatics clubs, and can afford to be in private developments where pools are provided for them.
You know, I'd like to think that Oxford's kind of special and that, you know, maybe we can be the exception. And that is, even with our population, we have a facility that maybe the surrounding communities that are similar to our numbers will be able and have to come here to swim and, and have programs and have competitions. So I'm, the fact that similar locations with similar populations do not have a pool, and in particular, a pool that might be covered, might be a benefit to us in that we could provide something for them that they don't have. And, and I just, my whole hope is that this facility will, at, at some point, begin to generate money for our community. And maybe when a lot of us are off the board, the new members of the board will say, boy, I'm glad that they were innovative enough to think about what the future would look like, and we'd have a facility that would be able to serve the bunch of folks that are going to be coming in this direction as the years go by.
Well, pardon me, I'm sitting here thinking, it's not a question of whether or not a citizen want it, they've already spoken and said that they do. I mean, we've done that in, in, in the studies, the surveys, and it ranked very, very high. So that's not the issue at this point. The issue in my mind would be, is it feasible to put it at Hicks Field in that area? Or should we be looking at some other place that the city currently owns that's conducive to meet the needs of the population that we're trying to serve? I mean, so, so if it's going to be in the city limits of Oxford, we're not necessarily tied to Hicks Field.
Mayor, do we have access to information that would might give us a clue as to what kind of an impact having a pool like this, a facility, would have on encouraging others to move here to enhance that growth?
You know, I appreciate that question, Commissioner, because I think that that's a little bit of what I'm thinking in the back of my, I think that's why I asked the question about what are the needs if we expect the population to grow? And of course, we've been expecting the population to grow for many years, and something always happens and there's a little setback. But I think looking at the amount of growth that, in how congested and expensive things are getting in the Raleigh-Durham area, it is, did somebody just say something?
I said more.
Creedmore, that, that it's, it, it's likely to come. And, and I think we, you know, so, so I don't, I don't know about that. I think we could probably look into that and ask, you know, and that might be something that can be one of the questions that we look further into. I think that's a, a good point, Commissioner. And did you, yes?
Mayor, I wasn't on the board when Oxford Park was established or the concept of it or the birth of it was developed, but I don't think when it was, the concept was thought about, they were thinking that it was going to be as many ballgames played at Oxford Park as it is played and be utilized as much it is utilized and be a money generating facility as it is. So because others have not done it, does not preclude us from doing it, being the first to look to tomorrow and not just today at what we got today, but looking to tomorrow. So far, everything that has been developed in Oxford and Graham County, including the Gap, has grown tremendously and has provided money for not only the inner city of Oxford, but for the county. So who knows what a pool would, what kind of a access or what kind of benefits we would gain? I may not be on the board when it happened, but we can't, we can't let, because others didn't do it, stop us from being visionaries and doing it.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think, yes, Commissioner Tovey.
Has, has anybody looked into a business sponsorship from some of the big companies that we've got around town, like Revlon or Bandag or CertainTeed? Could we get, maybe if we could generate some interest with them? Because I think that's the only way that we could even possibly afford a pool at this time, but certainly if we could get some business sponsorship, it would help.
I think that was part of, sorry, I, I think that was part of what Rachel was saying is that we, if we move forward with this process, then that's certainly something we want to look at as far as, you know, being able to pay for the pool, the grants, sponsorships, bonds, that sort of thing.
I, yeah, my correct and understanding, that would come when you have a, a much more defined plan for what you want to accomplish. I, I have a couple of questions, but I don't want to preempt anybody else asking theirs. So are there other questions from members of the board? So one of my questions, and I don't know if this is appropriate for Chris McLucky or Rachel Cotter, but there was the discussion, and Commissioner Bridges has brought it up several times about his idea, you know, the idea of having a covered pool. And then Mr. McLucky said, you know, you really have to have your footings done ahead of time if we, if that is part of the goal. So would that be, could that be included in the feasibility work that you would be doing, Ms. Cotter? Or where, where would that fit in?
I think that would probably be, I think it would be a collaborative effort between Chris and I. We would need to understand what components of construction would need to be included in the first phase, and then Chris would need to be providing the pricing. But since Chris also has some expertise in construction management, he would be able to provide input to us as to what those phase one elements might be. And I'll open it to Chris if you have anything to add to that.
No, not really. I mean, I, I think, I think you're right. I mean, that, and it's something we could, could kick back and forth and think through, but the, the goal is really to minimize the impact of large equipment and other things moving in close proximity to the pool or digging in close proximity to the pool. So, and there's, there's a number of different structure types out there from more standard brick and mortar with glass that opens up, and there's others that are less expensive, but I can show you pictures of them that look really nice, that have giant garage door sides that open up that give it very much of a indoor-outdoor feel during the summer. So you're still under the, over, under the cover, but you can have the pool deck outside if people want to suntan or picnic or whatever, and, but you can still see the pool and hear the pool and feel like you're a part of the pool, you're not outside of a building versus inside. So there's, there's a bunch of different ways you can go with this.
So we could, if we were interested, have those kind of layers included in the discussion, a more detailed discussion of pricing?
Yes, we, we could, we could do a, a fundamental baseline price for what Rachel's talking about and then have, you know, multiple line items of add alternates. If you wanted, if you want to never do, never consider it covered, that's a baseline. If you want to put footings in to cover it at some future date, it's this. If you want to cover it now, it's this. But covering it, knowing whether you're going to cover it really impacts the way Rachel lays out the site, because it determines where you put the building, you know, how you orient the swimming pool, because then you've taken a swimming pool with this footprint, but now you need to allow for this footprint. So, because we look, we, when we were doing our first exercise, we saw some, or I saw some, some, there was an interesting swimming pool, which is similar to ours in two, but it had an L-shaped building around it, would have made it virtually impossible to cover at, at. Would have made it virtually impossible to cover at, at some future date. So knowing whether you want to cover it now or in the future is, is really a decision, decision you have to make now, even if you don't want to cover it for a few years.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that.
And, and I just have a follow-up question to, to his comment, Mayor. I mean, if we want to use it for competition, we, we need to know that we want to cover it upfront, correct?
I'll also. Is that a question for us?
Yeah, I mean, you know, because I, I remember the mayor saying something about, you know, or some, or maybe it was Tina. Tina said that if it's going to be used for competition, then it almost certainly needs to be covered because of the seasons that the swim teams compete. Correct?
Correct.
Yes, so.
Yes. Not only that, swim teams tend to practice at like five or six o'clock in the morning. Covered.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Ms. Cotter, were you going to say something?
I was just going to add that it's a programming discussion and I think the question's been answered. We can also look a little bit more deeply into any and all programming opportunities that would generate revenue and the impact that has on an indoor or outdoor pool during the operations assessment.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, and thank you very much. I also, I, I'll be honest. I, it goes to show you that when we use vocabulary, sometimes we all hear the same word and think different things. When I was thinking feasibility study, I was thinking we would be doing a stu-, we wouldn't have any numbers yet, but we would be doing a study that said, if you want to do an outdoor pool, you can do X, Y, and Z, and this is how it works with your community. So I didn't, I didn't expect a feasibility study to be discussing, you know, kind of really narrowing down on the engineering and the requirements for a specific plan. Um, I had something very different in mind that would enable the board then to make a decision about whether or not we wanted to go with something covered or, you know, what was the timeline of Rucker Park or a, a smaller recreational pool. So, um, I'm playing a little bit of catch-up in my own mind here with what we've been presented. I, I do have a question related to the optional services, Ms. Cotter, in, in what's in our agenda packet regarding the, so there's one for architecture, part one, existing Hicks Gym, and then structural engineering assessment. So what is the, can you tell us a little bit more? I mean, I think I understand structural engineering assessment, but then tell us more about the architecture piece, these, these two add-ons. And then, and then, yeah, just can you talk a little bit about all of the add-on items to the, um, study that you're, the feasibility study?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So, um, the optional services really look at any opportunities for either reusing Hicks Gym or constructing a completely new recreation center that could encompass a pool. We made those optional services because it's my understanding that the pool is the priority. And, um, we would need a little bit more direction on what the vision for the Hicks complex is. Once that is understood, uh, we would complete the structural assessment to understand if the gymnasium is in a condition where renovating the building would not be cost prohibitive, or it would be comparable or less than demolishing the existing structure and constructing a new recreation complex altogether. Um, these would also include some very, very high-level, basic footprints of how you might renovate Hicks complex if it's deemed that you can renovate it. So what would be in the building? Would it be, um, gymnasium space, multipurpose rooms, indoor tracks? I'm, I think the pool would still be in addition to the Hicks Gymnasium. The existing structure probably isn't large enough or constructed in a way that adding an indoor pool would be feasible without significant cost. Um, and then same thing for the new recreation complex. If you were to demo the existing Hicks Gymnasium, the new recreation complex could very well then include a new pool. You are looking at a significant increase in fee or in construction cost if you're starting to think about renovating or proposing a new recreation complex.
Thank you. Do any board members at this time have further questions, either for Ms. Cheek, Ms. Cotter, or Mr. McLucky? Okay. Um, so at this point, and, and we are still, I believe, lacking our recreation committee chair in the room. Do we want to just all, we'll let this simmer? And, and then come back at another time to discuss, I, what we're interested in doing is that, what is the pleasure of the board?
I, I am, I am of the mindset that we need to, to start final, well, looking at some, some quantifiable numbers. But as a committee and as a city, you know, I don't think we have a clear vision. I mean, so you can't do the other without one, I mean, so we must, we must decide what we want. And then it can be determined whether or not we will move forward or not.
So are, are you, are you proposing, Commissioner, that everybody just let this information simmer a little bit? Is this, I, should we be calling a recreation committee meeting? Should this be a topic of discussion at our retreat? What, what are, are you thinking? Or do the other members have additions to this?
Well, I, I like the idea that we have a little framework here. Because it, 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 we are moving in the right direction, but we're not moving together. And in order for any of this to work, we must move, you know, with, with, with a similar vision. I mean, and whether it's at Hicks Field or whether it's covered, not covered, that should be a committee issue. Let the committee determine a few of these things. And then Hawk and, and, and Alan, you know, work together to, to help us visualize how this would impact us financially as a community and as an individual. I mean, then we can say, yeah, we can do this. Or, boy, no, I didn't realize and I, we can't do this. Or I don't want to, you know, I mean, we can't keep talking about it in, in isolation. You have to have a concrete plan, move forward, look at it and move on it. Otherwise, let it go.
Well, Mayor, you know, I don't mind, uh, to use your terms, I don't mind it simmering. I just don't want it to be overcooked and get burned. Um, we've been, we've been, we've been talking about pool for 25 years. And I think Commissioner Fields already said that there has been, you know, a, a desire to have a pool. And, and the fact that we're trying to look at some numbers, look at some designs, doesn't mean we're not moving forward together. It just means, you know, I, I, I mean, I've been on this board a lot of years and, and we've been talking about swimming pools forever. And, and so I, I'm not sure that there's a, there's a gap between what the community desires and, 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 and our job to try to provide this for them. I mean, I want to look at some designs. I want to see some numbers simply because if, you know, if I'm going to vote on something, I, I, I certainly want to make sure that it's something we can do. And, and I think we've thrown out, we gotta maybe look at some other funding resources to do, to do this. But, but I, I don't think that there's a question about what we want. Um, there may be some questions about how we go about getting it done. Uh, and again, you know, this thing is about to overcook, you know? I mean,
It's sticking.
I mean, please, you know, I don't think, there may be some members of the board who have some, you know, some feelings about it. But, uh, you know, I think the, the, the public has clearly showed us that, you know, this is something.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. I, I saw you there. Yes, please proceed.
Can this, why not this go to the recreation committee?
Yep.
And let them formulate what they can bring back to the board, meaning comparison of two different types, styles, that the preliminary, the preliminary, so that we will have something concrete to begin our communications, conversations or what have you on. But I'm very much with Commissioner Bridges and we're kicking the can down the road too long, you know? We need something. We need to let it go to the recreation committee and let them formulate their ideas and thoughts, bring back to us and go from there. But, um, for us to take it home and put it back on the stove and try to cook it a little bit longer, we're just kicking the can again.
Well, I don't, I don't think that was the intent. I, I just think that there's been a lot of information that was presented tonight. That, so thank you very much, Commissioner Tovey.
Yes, it's, it's, it's a shame that the chairman isn't here tonight. Um, I think we should have a committee meeting along, obviously along with Tina and, and let's look into, if we're going to do a feasibility study, let's look into what type of, of facility the committee wants or recommends. And then, then we can go from there. I mean, you know, you've got to take everything into account. The cost of the feasibility study alone. Um, so let's, let's try and get hold of Mayor Pro Tem and see if we can't get a, a meeting fairly soon to discuss this.
We'll, we'll have that discussion with Ms. Cheek and, um, carry on. And in the meantime, I, I want to thank, and I'm sure I speak for all of the board, I want to thank you, Ms. Cheek and Rachel Cotter and Chris McLuck-, McLucky for your work so far and your patience with us tonight. There was an awful lot of information here presented. And we appreciate your taking the time to go through it with us as well as to respond to all of the questions and the commentary that, um, there has been. So we will, uh, follow up with the appropriate people this week and, and, uh, work towards scheduling a recreation committee meeting where this information can be brought to that meeting and, and hammered out a little bit further between, between those that attend the meeting, everybody there about what next steps to take with respect to additional detail with McAdams and the feasibility study. And, and Mr. Thornton, do you have anything to add to that at this time? Okay.
I, I did not, not at this time, no.
Okay. Well, uh, thank you.
Madam Mayor, can I, can I finish on one thing?
Yes, please.
To address one of Commissioner Bridges' concerns. The, the pool prices or the pool budget, the pool budgets that were established were built on today's dollars. Every, every year that this decision gets kicked down the road, they're going to compound at about 5%. It's going to get 5% more expensive every year. So if that helps you in your discussion of, of when to do this or how to do this, it's not going to get any cheaper. So I just wanted to, as, as, as a means of, if you want to project out two or three years, industry standard and what all of the industry journals are expecting is for construction costs to grow by plus or minus 5% a year.
Thanks. Excellent. And I, and I think, and just to reiterate, I'm correct that the part of the feasibility study, the operational and financial plan, Ms. Cotter, that in, that encompasses what it would take to run a facility. So how, you know, what we could expect on an annual basis to keep it going, correct?
That's right. Yes.
Okay. Excellent. All of that very important information. Okay. Um, so with that, we will thank you all and proceed forward to our public comment portion of the meeting. This is probably the longest it's ever taken us to get through our delegations and go to public comment. Uh, Ms. Bowen, do we have anybody signed up for public comment? We do not. Okay. So we can go forward to item four, which is to consider adopting for a, excuse me, consider adopting a resolution to authorize the city manager, planning director, and finance director to sign all requisitions for funds from the CBD, CDBG 20-V-3524 grant. The city was awarded $900,000. Congratulations, Cheryl Hart, in funds for coronavirus aid. Approval of persons authorized to sign requisitions is needed as part of the agreement. Two signatures are needed for each requisition. The city proposes to use 810,000 in community development block grant funds to assist city residents with subsistence mortgage rent and utility payments for up to six months for low and moderate income households directly affected by the coronavirus since March 30th of 2020. The funds will also be used to enhance broadband Wi-Fi availability in the city's downtown area with the remaining funds being used for program administration. No local funds will be expended in this program and you have support information in attachment for a. And of course, the staff recommends that we adopt this relu-, resolution authorizing the city manager, planning director, and finance director to sign for requisitions for funds from the grant. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Okay, I think I saw Commissioner Bullock first there. Uh, so motion by Commissioner Bullock, easily seconded by Commissioner Bridges. And, um, is there any discussion on the motion? Uh, okay, all in favor of the motion signal. I can't say by saying aye. Let me do the roll call, Commissioner Curran.
Yes.
Commissioner Gilreath.
Yes.
Commissioner Bullock.
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges.
Yes.
Commissioner Fields.
Yes.
Commissioner Tovey.
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously. I did have a question I did, but I don't see Ms. Hart on the call anymore. I just had a quick question. This is the one that I've always been asking. Mr. Thornton, it says Wi-Fi availability for the city's downtown area, but I know we had discussed, you know, providing enough of a reach to maybe reach out over to housing authority uh, and, and people in that area, which is so close to the downtown. Is that still in the plans?
We're still working on that to the best of our ability. We had a gathering today out at our water tower that included the folks who would be doing the installation, which is open broadband. And it, it's been like pulling teeth to get them to provide us with any information. But, um, they were there this morning and, uh, we're still working on it. Um, I think Mary can probably tell you that, uh, we managed to assist the housing authority with basically some, um, whatever they call it. I'm not up on the, the technology. Uh, it's like Wi-Fi boosters, uh, that they installed out there to strengthen their signal currently, uh, before we do this. So we're still pressing forward, uh, with, uh, our desire to do just that. So yes, ma'am.
Right. Okay, that's all. I just want to make sure. I mean, I want to take care of our downtown, but we got some folks in need that are very close by. And I just want to make sure that this, this grant will go in that direction too. So thank you.
Can I add a comment about that?
Please, Ms. Yan.
So there, there were two opportunities for the housing. So they, there were two opportunities for the housing authority. Through the nat, natural sciences out of Raleigh. And they provided them two routers to help with some of their senior citizen area. And one of the, uh, uh, like, uh, community centers.
Great. So that's wonderful. Thank you very much for any work that you did there. That's, that's great. I mean, there are just a lot of people, a lot of students struggling. So thank you. Item B, consider adopting the Clean Water Education Partnership Memorandum of Understanding. The city of Oxford has been a member of C W E P for some time. They recently recommended a formal memorandum of understanding of their service to provide education outreach and mass media services for the protection of the utilities they assist. With the ever-changing and increasing stormwater requirements by the state. This memorandum of understanding will provide documentation of the city's compliance with the stormwater outreach and education retirement. Excuse me, requirements. And you have information in your attachment four B. Staff recommends that the board adopts the Clean Water Education Partnership Memorandum of Understanding. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Toby, any discussion? Okay, then we go forward with our roll call. Commissioner Curran.
Yes.
Commissioner Gilreath.
Yes.
Commissioner Bullock.
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges.
Yes.
Commissioner Fields.
Yes.
Commissioner Toby.
Yes.
Great, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item C, consider adopting a series resolution authorizing the issuance of the bond. Board of Commissioners previously issued its five million dollar water and sewer system revenue bond anticipation note. Series two thousand and nineteen. Dated October twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen pursuant to a bond order adopted on October fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. In order to finance the construction of capital improvements to its water and sewer system. Including thirty thousand linear feet of water main lines and twenty-one hundred. Linear feet of sanitary sewer lines. This is known as the project. The project is substantially complete and the United States Department of Agriculture. Has agreed to purchase the city's water and sewer systems revenue bond series two thousand and twenty-one, known as the bond. The proceeds of which will be used to refinance. Will be, will be issued pursuant to a series resolution which provides for the terms of the bond and the sale thereof to USDA. The city's Bond Council Maguire, Maguire Woods LLP. Has drafted the series resolution for consideration and adoption by the board. The bond order authorizes the issuance of water and sewer revenue bonds. And pledges water and sewer revenues to repay the bond. The North Carolina Local Government Commission has already approved the issuance of this bond. Your support materials are in attachment four C. The staff recommends that the board approve the series resolution authorizing the issuance of the bond, the sale thereof to USDA and the terms of the bond. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion.
By Commissioner Bullock, any discussion on the motion? Okay, I have one question and that is that over the many discussions that we've had. Regarding all of our wonderful utility project, Commissioner Curran has raised. Quest, you know, concerns about the forty years of owing money and certainly there, I'm not questioning that at all. But paragraph three in the document addresses early payment. So my question for the manager is if, if we. Wanted to round up our payment from a hundred and fifty-eight thousand and change to a hundred and sixty-five thousand, for example. Would that initial additional amount speed up our payment of the principal? And therefore maybe decrease the length of the loan and the amount of interest that we owe over the course of forty years?
It would if you chose to essentially prepay and of course, that decision is all dependent upon basically the other debt that you have. Revenues that you have coming in, a number of factors, but um. It's certainly good to have that option to where you don't have something sitting out there for forty years when you have a life expectancy on a. Pipe or, you know, series of pipe that's maybe twenty-five to thirty years. But, uh, you know, it's, it's designed to provide. A extended period of time for lower payments, but um. Interest is interest, you know that and over the course of forty years, even one point two five percent interest. Can, can look pretty large, especially on millions of dollars, so.
Well, that, that was exactly, one point three four million to be exact, I think. Ideal when you consider what it could be, but um, we've been exceedingly fortunate with our zero percent interest loans. And so all of a sudden it's like, oh, maybe, you know, so anyway, I just put that out there for the future. That maybe, you know, adding a small amount like six thousand dollars a year. Or would still make a little bit of a difference. So we've, any further discussion? And with that, then I will take the board's vote, starting to my right. Can Commissioner Curran?
Yes.
Commissioner Bullock.
Yeah.
Commissioner Bul, Bridges.
Yes.
Commissioner Fields.
Yes.
Commissioner Toby.
Yes.
Commissioner Gilreath.
Yes.
Okay, and that's it. So that motion carries six to zero unanimously. So we move forward to item D, which is to consider signing the reaffirmation statement of the Code of Ethics for two thousand and twenty-one. In two thousand and eleven, our board amended city ordinance. Paragraph two dash four sixty-one in accordance with North Carolina General Statute. One sixty-eight dash eighty-six and renamed it the Code of Ethics. Our board recommended that each board member sign the Code of Ethics. Receipt yearly to reaffirm our commitment to this agreement at the beginning of each calendar year. You have the Code of Ethics in attachment four D. Before we were already on our board meeting for over two hours, I was going to read a few excerpts from this, but I think I'm going to forego that. And ask our board members, have you all signed your Code of Ethics statement?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, and so you just need to bring it into City Hall. Bravo.
Already turned it in.
You already turned yours in, Commissioner Bullock?
Yes.
I turned mine in.
Okay, Bravo Commissioner Field. So mine's in my hand. I'm in City Hall, so I can pass it in and the rest of you, thank you for that and. In this time of turmoil. At a higher level than our city government, I think. Resigning the Code of Ethics and remembering who we are here for and who we serve is an important thing. So thank you very much for your attention to that.
Ma'am, do we need a motion and, and vote on that?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yes.
Well, it's, I guess, I guess we do. I think, I wasn't, Cindy, do we need a new motion?
You always do a motion. I don't think it would be illegal if you didn't.
Okay, I, I apologize. Let's do a motion. Who's going to motion?
I will, motion.
Okay, Commissioner Bridges, thank you so much. All in favor of resigning your Code of Ethics and sending it in? Let me know, starting with Commissioner Curran.
Yes.
And Commissioner Bullock.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Bridges.
Yes.
And Commissioner Fields.
Yes.
And Commissioner Toby.
Yes.
And Commissioner Gilreath. Excellent. Thank you very much for keeping me in line, Commissioner Bridges. And with that, we go to our add-on item. Which is the extension of emergency paid sick leave with the manager sent out to all of us last Friday and Mr. Manager, I'm going to let you, or do you prefer that Melissa LaBarre speak to this item?
I'll take a shot at it. Melissa can fill in any gaps that I miss. I hope everybody received and had an opportunity to review that and to understand kind of the objective here and where we're going. Number one, I will say that, you know, honestly, I had had some anticipation of the federal government extending. Their policy because this is where it came from. It was a mandate by the federal government to put it in place through December thirty-first and they chose in their infinite wisdom not to. In spite of the fact that, you know, nobody had been vaccinated and the coronavirus numbers continued to rise exponentially. Throughout the population. It seemed extremely arbitrary to me for us to just end the emergency COVID sick leave option. On December the thirty-first and in doing some checking. I have found that a significant number of our fellow local governments in North Carolina and if not the country are doing the same thing because. I'll put it this way as best I possibly can. I don't think any of our employees, number one, would choose to contract coronavirus. Nor do they have the choice of contracting it in December or January. So, you know, treating people differently. When it's something that is a bit beyond their control. Uh, I don't think would contribute well to the morale of the employees of the city of Oxford. Uh, nor any other local government or county government or state government institution. So what we are really proposing is to extend the policy that has been in place until. The end of two thousand and twenty and extend that until the end of March. The thinking behind that is that. Most, if not all of the city workers are falling to the essential. Workers category and are in the process of receiving vaccinations for COVID and we were, were thinking that certainly. Most, if not all of our employees by the end of March. Will have had the opportunity to receive a vaccine and thus would then eliminate, you know, the need for this policy. Quite honestly, we don't have, you know, a significant number of folks that have. Used this or because they have contracted COVID. We hope that that continues, but again, the opportunity, the option is there. For an extension of the emergency paid sick leave. If they were to either contract coronavirus or be out for any of the four reasons that are specified on that first page, which is that. The employee subject to federal, state or local quarantine or isolation order related to COVID nineteen. Or that the employee has been advised by a healthcare provider to self-quarantine because they are infected with or have been exposed to. Or they are at a high risk of complications from COVID nineteen or the employee is experiencing symptoms of COVID nineteen and is seeking a medical diagnosis. And or the employee is caring for a spouse, child or parent subject to quarantine or isolation for COVID nineteen related reasons. And I will further. Stress that if you have this policy in place to allow people to. Basically take sick leave that is covered for COVID-related reasons. They are much less likely to come to work infected and spread it to the rest of the employees here. At the city of Oxford and we basically get to a point where. We can't provide services because we do not have the people here or the bodies here to do just that, so. I would strongly recommend that the board consider extending the emergency paid sick leave for the employees of the city of Oxford for the, the reasons. Stated and, and would be glad to answer any questions and or if the Human Resources Director. Has any additional comments to give her the opportunity to convey those comments to the board.
Commissioner Toby, yes, sir.
Just one question. I agree with Alan. I think it should be done immediately. Any, any of the employees that are currently on or have used their sick time. After January first up to this date, will they get their sick days back?
Yes, we would, we would like to do that. Uh, you know, that's, we don't want anyone to be treated differently.
Thank you.
Just because you happen to.
Yeah.
Follow a calendar date that the federal government didn't continue. So that is, that is our thought. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
For specifically for COVID. That if they have been out for any reason between the first of January and now for COVID that they would be, that would apply retroactively.
Correct, correct. Under, under the terms of the policy and the reasons stated.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. Excellent, thank you.
I'm opposed to that, but doesn't it say in there that if they've used all their time, that they should then use their time of vacation or sick leave? Or did I misread that?
I think they're two different things, Commissioner. I think it's that if they exhausted their. Extended emergency COVID pay sick leave in the, in the earlier year, it doesn't start over again. So it's only in that instance, if you had your eighty leaves of eighty hours of paid leave. In the two thousand and twenty year and something happens, you don't, you don't get it again.
That's correct. That is correct.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Other questions? Does that answer your question for you, Commissioner Bullock?
Yeah.
Okay, other questions? Okay, well then, we already have a motion. Do we not?
No.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bullock. I'm sorry, it's getting late. So we have a motion, we've had discussion. Do we have any other further discussion on the motion? Then with that, I'll do the roll again, starting to my right. Commissioner Curran.
Yes.
Commissioner Bullock.
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges.
Yes.
Commissioner Fields.
Yes.
Commissioner Toby.
Yes.
Commissioner Gilreath.
Yes.
Thank you. So that motion carries unanimously. And so with, with that, you bet. Thank you. We appreciate your attention to that. Very important. The consent agenda is to accept the December finance report from our finance director and to approve. The November thirtieth agenda meeting minutes and December eighth regular meeting minutes. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Curran, any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. What's your discussion?
There was, there was COVID money that's part of that budget there. I was wondering how are we doing with any money that's there now? And what have we spent it on so far?
Mr. Allen.
Song?
Yes, so the board elected to do a. Payment plan or, or spending plan to utilize two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars of this. COVID money that was coming from the county. For the salary of law enforcement officers. And so all of that was exhausted in, in the beginning of the fiscal year.
So is your question, Commissioner Gilreath, does that answer your question or is your. Question related to the sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollar deficit in that fund in that column at the bottom of his report?
Well, no, but my, my question was, how did we spend the two hundred and ninety-four and, or two hundred and sixty-four?
Two hundred and twenty-nine thousand.
Two hundred and twenty-nine. That's what I was really asking. Yes, thank you.
Yes, so originally we had to turn in a, a spending plan into the county. And we stuck to that plan. July, August and September.
Okay. Is, so we use that money to play, pay for. Is, so we use that money to play, pay for police, was it police alone or police and fire?
Just law enforcement.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Any further questions, Commissioner Gilreath?
And there, there should be other money then available in the budget because if we didn't have to pay them out of the city's budget that we had currently prepared, there should be significant amount of money left in the budget as a result of their salaries. So what do we plan to do with that money? Is that reserved or something?
Well, we won't know that until the end, get closer to the end of the fiscal year, number one. And number two, we could not take monies that essentially were not CARES-funded monies and convert them to those other potential CARES usages. So I couldn't take general fund monies or taxpayer dollars that came from the city of Oxford residents and then convert them to whatever we may have in mind or are talking about.
No, no.
I would say please bear in mind that, you know, we're, we're going to utilize $810,000 for the purposes of, you know, rental assistance and utilities and all those, those types of things with this COVID grant that we've just received.
I, 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 I understand that part of it, but my question though is that if, if we didn't use the money that did it for the police salaries, what are we going to use that, that left, that money that wasn't used? Already in our budget, even if COVID didn't happen, we'd already budgeted to pay the police officers.
That is correct, you know, but like I just said, you can't, depending upon what you want to expend that offset 229,000 whatever dollars for, you can't treat that money like CARES funds money.
I'm not asking to spend it on CARES. I was just curious, what is the plan? I don't have a plan. I was just.
Till we get to more closer to the end of the fiscal year and understand what money we may have or what money we don't have, I couldn't tell you, but if we, if we have money that is left over, and we typically do, if you followed the audit report, it had, you know, the level of expenditures budgeted and the level of expenditures actually expended. That's, that's what's building your fund balances.
So maybe Commissioner Gilreath, this is something as we move through the budget season and I know you know, the manager has had some concerns about how revenues may decrease this year because of decreased sales tax dollars and so on related to COVID. So that.
Well, that's what I thought I was gonna hear again, but I was okay. I'm good. That's what I thought too. But I just wanted to confirm that, but, but I understand that, you know, I didn't.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for bringing that up and maybe that can be raised again, you know, further on to, you know, April-ish. So with that, any further discussion on the consent agenda? So I will take the roll for that vote, starting to my right, Commissioner Curran. You're muted, sir.
My apologies. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bullock?
Yeah.
Commissioner Bridges?
Yes.
Commissioner Fields, you are muted, so you need to unmute.
Sorry, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Toby?
Yes.
And Commissioner Gilreath?
Yes.
Okay, that stands accepted unanimously. So we move forward. The dates to remember are that the city of Oxford offices will be closed a week from yesterday, next Monday to observe Martin Luther King Junior Day. I suspect all of you have gotten an email from the county office saying that they will be doing a virtual Martin Luther King breakfast that will be able to be viewed on channel seven, spectrum, channel 17. So if you use Spectrum, you can access that channel and they'll be running it all day. The students that won the essay contests will be reading their essays and there will be a keynote speaker and some remarks made by individual human relation commissions. I should have asked you, Ron, to speak, Commissioner Bullock, to speak to that. I apologize. Do you want to add anything about that?
That's fine. The only thing I would say is for those that are not on Spectrum, it will also be available through the county website. However, it's long enough that they had to break it up into segments. So you'd have to check, see which segment is where, but it is going to be available through other sources.
So I want to commend you and the Human Relation Commission members for coming up with that innovative approach to this year's breakfast and, and I hope a lot of people take time. You don't have to do it all at once to log in and, and hear what is said. And I know that Commissioner, Commissioner, excuse me, Pastor Darby sent out a message, I think on behalf of the ministerial alliance for their virtual presentation. Am I correct? Commissioner Fields, that's at 4:00 PM on Sunday, the 17th?
Yes, yes. It will be virtual. I mean, we will be at Penn Avenue Baptist, but it will be, and you can go on Pastor Willie S. Darby's website to get the number or Penn Avenue Missionary Baptist Church to get the information as to how to log on, but it will be provided by, through Zoom.
And am I correct, it will also be done on Facebook Live?
Facebook Live also.
Web page, is it, is it a webpage or is it a Facebook page?
Facebook page, Facebook page. Facebook page and call in.
Okay. And so if you go to the Facebook page, you can hear about, you can also see the information to call in if people prefer to do that?
Yes.
And that's at 4:00 PM on Sunday?
Yes.
Okay, are there, are, is there anything else in the area that we should know about? Okay, so the ministerial alliance is the one that is, has been historically at First Baptist Church.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Great. Okay, and so with that, starting with Commissioner Curran, is there any additional comments that you would like to make?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Bullock?
I'd like to.
Commissioner Bridges?
Very briefly, I, I would like at some point to schedule a public safety committee meeting to discuss issues surrounding our police department, issues relative to turnover with officers and issues that are causing that to happen. I have gotten a couple of phone calls about the issue of retention of police officers and I, I'd like to get some clarification from Chief Colley and any other staff members and certainly our manager on that issue.
Okay, so we put you together with the manager and the chief to look at times that work and then you'll reach out to your committee to make sure that, that, that can be set up. Does that work? And that would, I would assume at this point would still be a Zoom meeting, correct, Mr. Manager? Okay. I know we're all getting tired of looking at these little tiles on our computers. It'd be nice to see some real life-size bodies, but, so I'll, Commissioner, you get together with them and, and figure it out. That'd be great. Thank you. Moving to Commissioner Fields?
No.
Commissioner Toby?
Just one thing. I just want to, I, I hear Dud is leaving us. I want to thank him for his service to the city and that's all. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yes, indeed. Thank you. And when is, is that at the end of this month? Do you recall when he's supposed to retire? When is that retirement supposed to happen?
January 29th.
Holy moly, Dud, are you just, are you doing the happy dance?
Uh, right now, I don't have my camera on.
Well, Dud, how many years will that make it?
Uh, just a mere 40.
You don't even look old enough to have worked anywhere 40 years.
Yes, he does.
Thank you so much.
I, I, I bet you're gonna, the next time we see you after you've been retired six months, you'll probably look even younger.
That'd be nice. Be nice.
Well, we, we salute you. Do you want to, because this is the last time you'll probably have all the board together on one space. Do you, are, are there any exit remarks you'd like to make?
Uh, just say it's been a pleasure. I'm just leaving because I'm turning 62. I've been there 40 years. I've got a granddaughter that's about a year old that I have not had contact with or touched, just seen on computers and Facebook. So as soon as this is over with, I'm going to be going to Texas to spend some time and meet my granddaughter.
Well, that's, that, are you going to drive to Texas?
Uh, I probably will. I hate flying.
And, and that way you can stay in your own air bubble.
Yes, I have a mask. Me and my wife have on our masks. We'll be perfect.
That's great. Well, well, I, I don't think there's any way on a Zoom call that we can adequately thank you for 40 years of service.
Well, I appreciate it. It's no problem. I enjoyed every bit of it.
But wow, what a, what a big, what a big change for the city and a big change for you. And thank you, John, for bringing that up. And, and I think we all need to do the Pat Fields clapping our hands for this. Light up the screen for Dud. Thank you so much, Dud.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I do have, I, I almost forgot. We got a compliment from Los Angeles, California on our 12 days of Christmas.
No way!
Yes.
Are you kidding? How did you get a compliment from LA?
From my brother-in-law who keeps up with Oxford. He said he thought that was very in, intuitive and creative for us to do it. He congratulated us on the thoughts to do something like that.
Add to that one from Louisiana and Arkansas.
Wow.
That's, that's pretty awesome. And I, I can tell you, my sister-in-law was only, she's a physician and she was really excited about sharing it with, with all of her peeps out there in Chapel Hill. And one of the comments that came back is, you know, this is all the city should be doing this. So you know, all of you that stepped up to the plate and, and, and Ron and Danny did such a great job.
Were they cute?
Everybody did a great job. So, so thank you.
County version of the righteous brothers.
Guys were awesome. Really. And Mary and Tina with their bells. I mean, everybody did a great job. So great. Commissioner Gilreath, do you have anything?
No.
Okay, great. And I just have one thing. And, and that is that a citizen called me with a concern that they had seen a large truck driving downtown with a very large flag with really bad language on it. And she was just really distressed because it was in the public right of way. And she said, if, if I had had, if I'd been a mother with small children, this would have been absolutely appalling. So she reached out to the police department and they were, it was after hours. So by the time she heard back from them, they were, it was long gone. And and she had a nice conversation with Lieutenant Stockwell about what they could and could not do. And in essence, they said, if it's not on a building, they can't do anything. But, but I'm throwing it out there. We have Chief Colley and the manager that, you know, we have an ordinance that says that in, in our code, writing or drawing obscene words or, or pictures. And I would like to just put it out there that in a public, you know, that, that it, and it references public property, but in my mind, the street is public property. And if any of our officers should see something like this, I don't think that we want this in our town. And it does seem to me that it would be grounds for ticketing. The fine is 50 to $200. And I, I just don't think we, we want people driving around our town with large flags with bad words on them. So I'm just putting it out there. And with that, Mr. Manager, do you have anything else you want to say?
Uh, let's see. I'm tempted to say roll tides. It's, I'm from Alabama. That's where I was born. So I've been a tide fan all my life. So I'm happy today. But I know some of you may not be, but, but let's talk really quickly about retreat. If we conduct a retreat, it will have to be virtual. Even, even the county who's a little bit ahead of me in retreat planning is planning to do theirs virtually. We, we contacted and had that conversation with them. They're doing theirs virtually. So it would have to be a virtual format. I'm not going to belabor the point a lot. I will be sending each one of you an, an email with a couple of questions about, you know, a desire and willingness to proceed and do that along with some potential times because honestly, if you do it virtually, you can do it whenever you want to. We don't have to reserve a venue or anything along those lines. We just all have to agree to what date that we may wish to do that. So I will be in touch with you hopefully tomorrow, providing you with that email about a proposed potential retreat for the board and see where you want to take it. But as staff will certainly do and be prepared for whatever the board wishes to do. I've already discussed it with staff in our staff meeting to begin preparations for a retreat as far as their departmental reports and what they would be doing and that it would likely be virtual. So we've already started with the process. We've also already started with the budget process. Departments have received their budget packets and instructions. So, you know, we, we continue to keep on keeping on here at the city of Oxford, but be on the lookout for that email. Please respond to it. And from those responses, we will compile what we need to do in order to hold a retreat virtually this year.
Just have one question. Will the treats and lunch be delivered to us?
I'll answer that one. That, the, the retreat lunch will be about like the Martin Luther King virtual breakfast. It won't taste as good. Let me put it that way. So.
Yeah, I think we should, if we, I think that if everybody is going to be investing extended amounts of time staring at each other on these little tiny postage stamps that maybe we ought to spring spring lunch for staff and, and.
We'll do something. We would just have to figure out whether or not Domino's could come by at the same time and drop it off.
Domino's?
Or Milano's.
Be delivered or you would have to pick it up. So, you know, logistical issues are going to be a concern. But look for that coming out as soon as tomorrow and we'll try to, to get something together so that, you know, we can all have the opportunity to do a little strategic planning and, and hear from our departments about what and, and hear from our departments about what they've got going on. It was a busy year in spite of COVID. And the year that we have coming is going to be another very busy year. So it's always helpful to have everyone's mind and thoughts thinking the same way or along the same lines so we don't get our signals crossed to the best of our ability. So be on the lookout for that. And that's all I've got. It's getting close to 10 o'clock. I think that's enough.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. I, I'm certain, Mr. Burnett, do you have anything you need to throw into the pot?
No, ma'am. I, I don't have anything to add. I don't know what happened to my video, but I'm still here. But I, I don't have anything to add.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion?
I think that I was Commissioner Fields when I saw Commissioner Gilreath's lips moving. So that was a concomitant motion. And so I have to do the roll call. I want to thank you all for your attention and your patience. And starting to my right, we have Commissioner Curran?
Yes.
Commissioner Bullock?
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges?
Yes.
Commissioner Fields?
Yes.
Commissioner Tovey?
Yes.
Commissioner Gilreath?
Yes.
Okay, we stand adjourned. God bless you each and everyone. Sleep tight. And thank you for what you do and what you bring to our community so dear to each of us. Let's keep it safe and sound. Take care.
Good night.